Good evening. Welcome to the Richmond Neighborhood Association's special session about parking. There we go. All right. So, thank you all for coming out. Good to see such good attendance. We have a relatively limited amount of time. We also have a lot of people. I -- so, thanks for coming out. What we will do is, we will introduce the topic and I'll have then the Portland Bureau of Transportation kind of talk about what the project is and also is not. There's been a couple of things I've gotten in my inbox that aren't actually true, but they might be different than what was in your inbox. So, let's kind of get the truth of what's happening, then we'll have some question time and hopefully some answer time, and then we'll have some board discussion time to determine what actions the Richmond Neighborhood Association Board will or won't take. And then after that, at around 7:30, we're going to have the Land Use and Transportation meeting, and that one is going to be about two development projects. And so, we'll break, let everybody leave that wants to leave, let everybody stay that wants to stay, and then we'll start that topic. So, without too much, I guess any, I was told I was supposed to start asking questions at the start. Is there anything else that needs to be on the agenda that I forgot?
Can I just mention this?
Yeah, go for it.
Hi, everyone. I caught some of you at the door, but Crystal, I'm Susan. I am a board member and Crystal and I would like to just head up a very simple community outreach project. We'd love to hear from more folks, and if, since we have limited time, we would really appreciate hearing further comments either on the parking issue or other neighborhood concerns you may have. Leave contact information if you'd like us to get back in touch with you, but this will be by where the sign-in sheets are, and we can pass out some index cards in a moment. Just wanted to share that there are other options in case we, time runs short. We'll be eager to hear from you. And thank you all so much for coming.
All right. That's really all I have. So, what I wanted to do is, I wanted to leave it to the Portland Bureau of Transportation to kind of introduce the program, what it is, what it isn't, and kind of give us a good five, 10-minute overview so that we can start kind of feeling our questions or statements. So, I'm going to leave it to you all.
I apologize in advance. I'm starting to lose my voice a little bit. So, if anybody can hear me, could you guys let me know? Can you guys hear me in the back? Okay. So, I'm here to talk about the Parking Pilot Program again. We were here, I don't know if it was about a month ago or so, talking about it. But essentially, for those of you that have not heard about the Parking Pilot Program, the city of Portland had an ordinance passed back in January 2000, I think it was eight, 2017 or 18, and essentially it directed our bureau, the Bureau of Transportation, to go out into the neighborhoods in Portland and ask if any neighborhood was interested in a parking management or parking permit program due to residential and commercial growth. So, the city of Portland currently has 17 parking permit programs, but they all exist because of commuter parking. But with all of the growth that's been going on in Portland, the city said if any neighborhoods would like to start a pilot program of some sort, you guys can go in and get letters from the, you know, chairs of the neighborhood associations. We got eight letters and we collected data, we got eight letters of interest, and we realized that only six of the neighborhoods qualified. One qualified for a traditional parking program, and the other one didn't qualify because it could just kind of piggyback and attach itself to another program. So, we had six neighborhoods that qualified. So, we went out to the, to the six neighborhoods, collected data, and chose the two with the highest occupancy rates, and those were Mississippi Street and Boise, and then it was Sunnyside. But it was this area of Sunnyside that kind of included both Sunnyside and Richmond. So, those are the two areas that we went out to, and we had open houses, and we asked if people were interested in the pilot program, we answered questions, and then we balloted the two neighborhoods, and we needed at least 50% of the ballots to be returned, and 60% of the ballots had to be in favor for the parking program to go through. But in both neighborhoods, only 35% of the ballots were returned. And so, at that point, we met with the chairs of the neighborhood associations, and we asked for feedback. We said, "Why do we think this happened? What can we do differently? What would you like to see done differently?" And Boise requested something called a Parking Management Plan, which is kind of a totally different direction. It focuses on the entire district as opposed to just like a subsection. Sunnyside said that they would like to see the program more developed before they pursue a pilot program. And then Matt from Richmond said that he would still be interested if we would consider kind of changing our order of operations. So, he wanted to see if, if the neighborhood was interested in establishing, it's like an advisory body that would essentially work on creating rules for the neighborhood. Like, if we were to have a parking program, we would need this to be the visitor time limit, and these would be the hours of enforcement and what have you. And so, that's kind of where we are today. We essentially just need, and this is just like a simple way to do it, but we essentially just need a yea or nay from the neighborhood association to let us know if they are interested in establishing some sort of, it could be a task force, the, we don't really have the technical term for it yet, but essentially it would be a committee that would make decisions for the neighborhood about what parking should look like in this area. And then after all of these decisions are made, it would take approximately one year for them to create all these rules. After those decisions are made, the neighborhood would be balloted, and then the neighborhood would let us know if they are interested in a pilot program or not. So, essentially, that's kind of what we are here for today, to see if you guys are interested in establishing a stakeholder advisory committee, and we're here to answer any questions that you have. And I have with me Jay Rogers. He's been in parking for 32 years. He has a ton of knowledge and history. And then Kristen Aldrin, she helps oversee all of these programs. So, is there anything you'd like me to touch on?
I guess maybe, could we run through the handout there? And maybe Jay, if you could run through the handout real quick and highlight what's of interest and what's...
Yeah. So, the handout that you got, do you have a copy for me so I can refer to it while I'm talking? So, the handout that we got, this is our attempt to kind of differentiate between the different roles that these different groups are going to have. So, the RNA right now has two roles. They vote yes or no to engage with P-Bot and a consultant to create a parking pilot program. So, that's kind of exactly what I just mentioned. You guys would tell us, "Yeah, we're interested." "No, we're not interested in working with P-Bot and a consultant to create some sort of program." And then the RNA would nominate two neighborhood association representatives to serve on the committee, and that doesn't have to be voted today, is my understanding. I'm not expecting you guys to tell us point-blank. Yep?
So, this is about a program along Division Street, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And if it is helpful, I can hand out something...
It might not include Division Street.
Right, but in the vicinity of it.
Yeah, that's right. And what I did, because Sharon, I don't know, is Sharon here?
Hi. Sharon requested that I bring the heat map. So, when we collected data the first time, we collected data for three hours, and we collected it on Thursday, May 3, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. And essentially, we counted the number of stalls available on the street, and then from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., we counted how many cars were in those stalls to kind of get this average occupancy parking rate in the neighborhood. And we have these heat maps that show like which blocks are occupied at which rate and what have you. This was the original boundary that we proposed for the parking permit program, but at this point in the process, it would be up to that advisory body to tell us, "We want this area for the parking program." So, P-Bot can't really...
Yep.
I feel like you're, I'm neutral on this, but I feel like you're oversimplifying this because once the pilot program is started, of other neighborhoods, how many pilot program processes have resulted in not having a change in policy in the neighborhood?
Well, what do you mean?
Basically, it's a data company that we agree to this, and something's going to change, is my understanding.
You guys would essentially be voting to form some sort of advisory body that would make rules for the neighborhood?
But if, in all of the processes that you and Jay have dealt with, how many did it change just once there was already a...
Well, you're actually, you would be the first pilot program. We don't have any other pilot program to refer to.
The resolution that was passed that allowed us to do this, it directed us to initiate a pilot program in two areas of Portland. We're trying to identify those two areas. So, nobody's engaged in a pilot program yet.
The previous ones have voted in doubt.
Yes. And the other one, Boise, is doing the entire neighborhood program, a neighborhood parking management plan.
So, the point is, if you start this process, do you end up with a parking permit no matter what?
Yes. It's just, you know, as this handout demonstrates, the tools, this advisory group or this committee would help dictate what are the tools that would be implemented that aren't already used in the traditional 17 areas. So, in the APP areas that we have around Portland that have the area parking permit requirements, they're, they follow very strict rules that are dictated by city code. This is a deviation from that. This is an allowance to deviate from what is in code already for those programs.
So, to clarify, once the program has been designed, then will there be an opportunity for the neighborhood to vote on it?
That's within the boundaries. When the boundaries are picked, the neighbor, the people, addresses within the boundaries will get to vote on it. And it doesn't necessarily result in a permit program. I meant if they voted down.
The last two that voted down.
I think there's a big missing element or variable in this conversation, though, which is the Portland Development Commission and parking developments around the buildings. Because that's what created this scenario. And so, for, I've lived, my family's lived in the neighborhood for 70 years. My family's had commercial businesses on Division Street for 90 years. I own Stavone's Restaurant. They're putting up a low-cost housing building next to us with 32 units with no parking. So, I feel pain for, there's been two restaurants, long-term restaurants that have gone out of business on Lower Division, place most out of Portland local. And they blame not only the construction factor, but just the parking, and I can't, I feel pain for the neighborhoods, but like, this is just going to demolish the business atmosphere and this whole parking issue that actually made Division a place to be. And so, we can talk about like parking, you know, requirements, longer parking plan, but if we don't somehow involve the development factor and requirements for parking in condos, then this conversation kind of moves in a way. I mean, we're taking a big, yeah, we're putting a big...
Hang on just a second. So, we're all very passionate about this. I appreciate that. There's been some good commentary so far. I want to keep that going. We're starting to talk over one another already, and we have to keep in mind, we have to be very, very short. So, what I'm going to ask you to do is raise your hand. I'll call you off in groups of three. Remember your order. Please try to speak once and then wait for others to have their turn before speaking again, and make your points fastly now. All right, stacks of three. Anybody who's interested, one, two, three. I saw him there first, so you're first. Go ahead.
Can you just describe what the plan is first before everybody starts talking about something?
What the parking permit plan is?
Yeah.
We don't know what the plan is. It's up to the committee's going to make it.
That comes down to what I requested of P-Bot is that we do, we form the plan first before putting it for a vote. Previously, it had been put for a vote before forming a plan. And so, this time, we're trying to put either the cart in front of the horse or behind it. I'm not really sure which.
So, just to answer your question, essentially, the committee would decide what the hours of enforcement should be. They would propose a boundary, like this is the area that we want a parking permit program in. They would figure out the visitor limit, and then if they want to use the pilot tools available, and the tools available would be the ability to limit the number of residential permits. So, it's like, in this apartment building that has 100 units, we only want 80% of the units to get permits. They would have the ability to charge a surcharge if they feel like they should be charging a surcharge. So, there's a base fee of 75 for the permit, but if they're like, "Hey, we want to charge more," and then get more transportation incentives or what have you in the neighborhood, they have the ability to do that. Doesn't mean they have to do it. They just have the ability. And then they have the ability to cap the total number of permits available to the neighborhood. So, one year, we issued 6,000 permits. Next year, we say we only want to issue 4,000. The three tools, they don't have to be used, but they are available because we're working with residential and commercial growth as opposed to commuter parking. So, that's kind of up to the advisory body to say, "This would work in our neighborhood and this wouldn't work in our neighborhood," and they would come to us and be like that.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead. If you could also say who you are, if you're a resident, business owner, etc.
Sure. My name's Kevin Deemer. I've lived here 22 years. For 20 of those years, I've been a servant for you. I'm a deputy district attorney, but I'm here as a neighbor. I will tell you, I don't have an opinion yet on this, but when you're looking at the factors, I will share with you that do not count on enforcement. No matter what someone tells you, I could tell you that what's coming down the road, do not count, if you're saying, "Oh, I'm for this because they're going to enforce it. They're going to tow that car in front of, that's parked in front of my house." That's not going to happen. Okay? You might hear other information, but when you factor all this in, I'm telling you, from my experience as 20-year deputy district attorney, you will not get enforcement, even though it's a different agency, a different shade of command, but just have that information.
Thank you very much.
They wrote 12,000 area parking permit tickets last year.
So, he actually stole my thunder. I was going to ask about enforcement. Because I'm skeptical.
Well, he stated about enforcement, so if you could stand up, say your name and ask about it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Kevin Deemer, and I'm skeptical about enforcement. We may have the best intentions. I just don't think we have the means to do it.
And I'll let Jay...
Enforcement's kind of a function of how the permit program's designed. If you have a four-hour time limit, it's a lot harder to enforce that. Like in Northwest, they have a four-hour time limit. That is really hard to enforce. Another zone has one hour, that's a lot easier to enforce. And then your enforcement hours are important also. And you're right, it's going to be really challenging if it goes, if it's nighttime. If it goes past 6:00, 6:00 to midnight, it's going to be challenging.
All right. So, what I want to do is, I want you to raise your hands. However, I want to try to make sure we're addressing all the groups possible. So, if you are a commercial business owner, could you please, and are interested in commenting? I know you already have. So, I know at least one more of you are a commercial business owner or employee representing a business. If you have any questions, raise your hand. All right? Go for it. Could you state your name, what business?
Phil Sylvester, Company Drive Studio.
All right.
So, my classes are three hours and often have as many student people. And so, it's a big load on the neighborhood. But if a program doesn't allow like the four-hour limits of Northwest, we'll basically, and it's enforced, we'll still be showing that.
We have a six-spot parking lot, and some people ride their bikes or walk or take public, but it would be, and we've already had the city take away almost all the street parking with the bus stop and swales and things. They were going to take every single spot. There are only, I think, three spots on our whole block on Division, so we've lost a lot of street parking.
In that kind of case, we do have like single-day use, scratch-off permits, or like lottery tickets to scratch the time to use it.
And essentially, how those work, if like in Northwest Portland, we have businesses that might also have classes. In Northwest Portland, you can buy up to 10 books a year, so that's 100 daily passes, and it comes out to being $1.50 a day for somebody to park on the street. You would give it to those people that are attending your classes, and they would technically be good for the whole day, not just the three hours. So, that's the workaround. And the limit is 10 books per address, per permit year, but there are exceptions as well. If somebody needs an exception for whatever reason, they can go before the parking committee, and then that committee goes, "Okay, that makes sense. You guys can have this," or what have you. But again, that would also be up to the committee to make that decision.
Thank you. One of the other large groups on Division, it's actually Majority Renter on Division. Normally, Neighborhood Association meetings are predominantly homeowner. Do we have any renters here?
Yes, you were said.
Okay. I want to give you an opportunity to, to speak. Are you interested in speaking right now or no?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Sandra Bowden, and I have a business, and I rent space on Division, well, the block of Division. I can see the concern that I don't know, remember that he was speaking about...
Amy Oregon.
About like having a business that have any kind of big flow of people coming for the service. One of the reasons why I don't go really much on Northwest is exactly...
To parking.
Is not really easy for parking and for paying.
Yeah.
So, this is something that we, I heard a lot of people that live here in the neighborhood, that live in the neighborhood for a while, we saw changing the business on the streets, condos and everything. I'm not sure that just trying to fix the last of the results of having this kind of really big developing cannot be a long-term solution. And so, I heard like before that he was starting speaking about having big construction, a lot of apartments will not park in the other apartment. I know that maybe this is not the right place to speak about it, but maybe that's going to be considered. That's my opinion.
Thank you very much. Are you also a renter?
No.
Okay. So, hang on. All right. Ready, everybody? So, everybody else, go ahead and raise your hand if you're interested in taking a question. All right. So, we've got one, we've already did one, so I'm going to go Alan and Brennan. So, red shirt, or jacket, sorry.
So, I came in late, so I was just asking him, but what are the problems and the goals of the project? What are the problems that are seen, or the goals the program is trying to achieve?
Well, since you reached out about...
Okay. So, this is something that had been a top issue for local residents, had had a lot of questions and requests related to parking, and this was a possible option to help solve some of the parking issues. And so, we said we were interested in at least looking into the program. We didn't state exactly what we wanted or anything like that. We just said that residents are constantly talking about parking, constantly saying that parking's an issue. This is literally the only thing that might help parking in the area, so that's why we reached out. And this is actually very, very bipartisan reach-out. So, this is from people that are full-on, like urban development, go, 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 and also people that are full-on, "I want to keep my neighborhood the way it is." So, there was a lot of consensus across the board there. Did that answer your question?
No. He said it was issue. I guess, well, what, so is it, I mean, are businesses are struggling because they're not places for people to come across town, and residents aren't able to park in front of their house anymore? But what, figuring out what exactly those problems are and then, you know, how, what the goals are could probably help create a better path.
I agree.
Too many cars, too few parking spaces?
So, just, I've worked in real estate, and I had a funny several conversations with PDC about the comments as far as increasing, lack of partner requirements. And that's not something, you know, from the top, that's not something Portland is interested in doing. It's public transportation, then bike, then car. So, asking them to change that isn't going to happen.
Well, we're not going to change that. Yes. And P-Bot has nothing really to do with that.
Wouldn't we vote on that?
When did City Council vote on that?
When you voted, City Council voted on that.
Yeah. Portland didn't vote on it, but City Council voted on it a year or so.
You'll be the next one.
So, anyway, so, you know, the group, you know, if we can identify the problems and figure out what goals are that might be a more productive way to solve something.
All right. Thank you. Alan is next on the stack.
I'm Alan Fields. The more I think about it, I think it is a good idea to do a committee to try to work out the details, so when the public votes on it, they know what they're buying. But as far as the code that you're deviating from a little bit, the code requires for there to be a permit program, P-Bot does data collection, you have to determine there's 75% parked up for four days a week, at least nine months. During this SAC period, are you going to do robust data collection to see whether things are that parked up?
They, they, data collection's part of it. Once, if, if it gets voted in, we'll do data collection.
But several times, not just one...
Oh, several times.
Yeah. Well, we have a consultant that we hire when we're doing the data.
Because, yeah, one, one three-hour isn't enough, because under the code, you have to determine it's parked up 75% or more, four days a week for at least nine months a year.
That's why this, the pilot is not the code. We're allowing us to...
But are you going to, so you're not going to keep to that threshold?
Again, now, the consultant in the SAC would review that and decide that.
And the rest of it's 25%, it says commuter parking.
Yeah.
So, we're not, because we're not doing that. Right. There's, we're getting, we're going to waive like the petition. You won't require a petition. I think we're going to waive the size. I think the size is going to be...
The minimum number of blocks included?
Yeah. I think that will be waived.
All right. Thank you all very much. You were next on the stack, and then everybody get ready, we're going to have another stack here, so.
So, I'm Brendan Hargreaves. I'm a board member. I'm going to make a vote on this tonight, so I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts to maybe help, help folks craft their comments so that they're most helpful to those of us making a vote tonight. So, there's not really a proposal on the table. What we're voting on is whether to form a group, to craft that proposal. So, as you're making a comment, keep in mind that that's the decision we're making, is whether to form a group, to figure out what to do next. And so, if you have some thoughts or some assumptions about what happens through that process, or what you think is going to result, those are helpful to know. But keep in mind, that's the decision we're actually making tonight.
And that's actually a great point, and I apologize if I did oversimplify in the beginning, but that is actually the point of tonight's meeting, is to get, to get a gauge from you. Are you interested in establishing a group? Because it would be that group that makes all those detailed decisions that you were just referring to. So, it really is, do we want to establish a group to start talking about the problem, to see what the potential solution could be?
So, we can kill it tonight by not having this group?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
So, okay, we're going to raise our hands one more time. So, let's see here. You've been very patient, so I'm going to let you go next, and then you, sir, have also been patient, so.
Hi. My name is Jane Swenson, and I've lived on 37th Brothers, and it's, if you look at the heat map, it's 86% of us that live on that street is unoccupied. And so, there's been two buildings built there within the last three years, and I mean, I never expected to get, you know, parked in front of my house, but now I'm going to go, you know, it's, it makes me nerve, I don't know if I can get a parking space even close to my house anymore. I've moved in several times, I've had to go around the block looking for it and everything else. So, I just want to say, just, this affects me directly. I mean, I'm not a business, but I am a, I'm a believer in this. I, it scares people because I know we don't want the government involved and no, 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 but we don't want change, but that train has already left the station. I mean, it's already changed, and for someone like me that lives on the street, it affects my life, believe me.
And I appreciate the feedback, but I just want to be transparent. If the permit program were to pass, we don't ever want to say that we guarantee that you'd be able to park in front of your house.
Oh, but I agree.
Yeah. So, just so we're transparent, but...
I want to just keep things moving in the neighborhood. I just want, and we have cars there that, that just sit there for weeks and weeks and weeks, and you're like, "What?" And all the neighbors, we get together, I mean, like I said, most of these are unoccupied, and they're like, you know, "Who owns that car?" And we give notes on the car. "Can you move your car?" You know, it's annoying. I mean, for those of you who don't live on those streets, it's, it's a handful to take care of.
Thank you very much for your statement. Appreciate it.
Hi. So, I owned a business for, what, 10 years on this street, and I own two houses that are right outside of this little, you know, squared-in spot. And it's a bit frustrating because I sat in one of these meetings about 10 years ago, sitting right over there, when all this development started, and what you were talking about, the pecking order, like, this problem was created by this like imaginary idea that Portland that Portland would force everybody to, like, ride a bike or take a bus when, like, ninety-five percent of people's careers aren't just like ninety-five downtown, and it's that simple. So like, you know, like, now we're talking about creating this whole system here that is basically going to penalize everybody that isn't like that. And doesn't have to live in, so it, the reason I think a lot of these have been voted down is because, you know, and they haven't gone past the review section, is because of that. Is because it's like, you're basically saying the only way we're allowed to fix this is within this realm that Portland wants you to, like, ride your bike or take a bus. And if you can't do that, then now you gotta pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year being a lottery park in front of your business or in your house. So like, I mean, for me, I empathize with all the people here, but I don't feel any interest or need to want to further this along because it'll just cost me more money and make it more challenging to run that business.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. So I'm, I live in the neighborhood, I'm on ninety-five percent block, but I'm totally fine with people parking in front of my block, and I don't care how far away I park, it's just, I'm okay that way. So in a sense, I don't really, like, it doesn't matter to me, you know, that, like, that piece of it. As far as whether to form this committee, I think it's really important to have a holistic approach, and I still can't tell whether we, this is, that considers residents' ability to park, visitors' ability to park, and make sure spaces are available and turn it over at an appropriate, you know, amount of time for businesses to thrive. So it was, there's not all of those things, I'm not sure it's the most effective thing to do, and I still can't quite tell, so any more information's great.
I can give you a small piece of information, the committee will not simply be the Neighborhood Association Board, which is a hundred percent white and ninety-three percent homeowner. P-Bot can better address what that committee would look like.
The composition of the, the committee that we're forming, it will, it will be equal representation of the Neighborhood Association and the Business Association. And then we will solicit applications to the community at large. We will use the Office of Community and Civic Life and as well as all of our outreach to do and all of our, you know, our wide net. And we'll welcome it with the Neighborhood Association for your wide net so that we get a good pool of people that have, that we have a diversity of voices represented in the committee.
Just to be clear, I was talking about the issues that the committee addresses, not that makeup, the makeup, I'm glad it's gonna be diverse, but the, if you're not tackling all those different scenarios and those different problems, totally simply all of those, then you're, it's not a question.
So we would be utilizing the management tools that are found in the, the P-Bot parking management tool, toolkit that was passed by council. To utilize, we'd be drawing from those to address the issues, the parking issues, that would, would involve, obviously involve board residents and businesses because that's the district in which it would be addressing.
And so you mentioned, like, turnover for businesses. So the stakeholder committee or the advisory body, whatever we wanna call it, they would be working to create some sort of visitor limit that would suit the business needs in the neighborhood, and that's where the data collection comes in. So like, in Northwest Portland, they do annual data collection, and they realize that the average length of stay, can't remember if it's an hour forty-four or two hours of forty, and forty-four minutes. But then they kind of, they change their program up according to the data that they're receiving. So if we're doing data collection in your area and we realize that on average customers spend an hour and forty-four minutes on division when they visit certain businesses, we would be able to work with the committee to decide or determine what the best visitor limit would be. So the committee would be making decisions like that, yeah.
Thank you very much, I'll take another stack of three, I saw one, Vivian, and then somebody from the cream jacket, all right, so go ahead.
Hi, I'm Crystal, I'm RNA board member. It's fantastic to see this number of people come out to the meeting tonight. And I wanted to just get some more numbers, and I know that there was a big push to get flyers out to a lot of doors in this affected neighborhood. And I talked with a few of you that said that you came out because of that. So it looks like maybe there might be between eighty and a hundred people in the room tonight. Oh, it might be between eighty and a hundred people in the room tonight. My first part of my question is how many people, can somebody give me an estimate of how many people? And I know some of the, the buildings would have gotten one flyer, but have, you know, a hundred people within the building. How many people then would be in the, I, I wanna say, I wanna say affected area, but I know that that, those parameters of the affected area are not even solidified. So it's, it's, we're working with estimates at this point, but you can see where I'm going, like, the number of people that are out tonight versus how many people would, might have gotten information about this. And then to reiterate that the process is a committee, and then a year from now, there would be, again, a vote asking business owners and the people in the affected area to then weigh in. So how many people and exactly, exactly who would those people be that would be?
On the committee itself?
Yeah, or no, that would be asked, asked to vote. Could you describe the voting process and the, and the thresholds again?
Oh, the ballot.
It would be the ballot, it's every address within the, the boundaries, the proposed boundaries would get to vote.
Is there anybody in the room can, that you can give an estimate of the number of people whose voices would be asked to weigh in at the balloting time?
You, so you, it's if the boundaries were the one that was given before, okay.
For, for, for hypothetical.
Each address gets one vote.
Thirty-five percent return rate.
How much, how much?
Thirty-five percent return rate.
No, I know, but how much?
So, okay, the real question then is how many people in that block, how many addresses are there in that block?
Twenty-five hundred.
Tonight?
No, 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 just, and, sorry. So in this black box, how many addresses are there, there's one ballot per address.
Just off of memory, like, twenty-five hundred addresses?
Twenty-five hundred addresses approximately.
Apartment units, two.
What?
Apartment units, two.
Apartment, yeah, if it's a ten-unit apartment, that's ten addresses, Fred Myers is one address.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it might be twenty-five hundred people who, at the end of the committee process, would get a chance to say, yes, we want this or no, thank you, we don't want this.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vivian, yeah.
Yes, hi, I'm Vivian, and I'm from, I own my house, and I've been living here for four years. I'm on the worst ones, ninety-seven percent. At five or six in the morning, there is plenty of room, a lot of offenders, parkers or commuters coming from Russian or whatever, parking, taking the bus. The other part is all those apartments with no parking. Is there ever a discussion about having a park and ride somewhere? Does, I mean, does that mean anything?
I mean, there are park and rides, but they're further away. People, we're trying to, you know, limit the number of single occupancy vehicles coming, and so you don't want a big park and ride like Thirtieth and Hawthorne or something. So you want them out further, but people like to drive as close to work as they can get and take the bus.
My, my, I have a combined question here, as I was, like, many people distributing the flyers. Not everybody, I mean, it's very gentrified, yes, but there are a lot of places that are very modest. And I think the parking permit might be a strain on a lot of people, they might not be here, you know, maybe renters insure. But I, I do believe there are quite a few because I distribute a lot of rental apartments. And would there be, if the parking permit goes, would there be a clause for low-income people?
We would have to talk to the committee, the base price, it's a cost-of-service program, it's paid a hundred percent by permit fees, the city, there's no tax dollars on this permit program. So what the, this committee could say, let's make the permits eighty dollars, and with that five extra dollars could supplement anybody that is on HUD or, or the SNAP program and pay for their permit, so it could be done that way, but it would be through the committee.
And also, like, in one address, you might have three people who are not connected, or just roommate.
Right.
And somebody there cannot, that would be a student who have a hard time paying that year after year, for example. So one permit per household might not reflect exactly the situation.
Well, right now, it's every resident has a car, gets a permit, and if a resident has five cars, they can get five permits. But that'd be up to the committee to change that, that's the kind of limits they can put in place.
Right, so like, one of the tools available is limiting the number of residential permits. So if, like, the first year, everybody gets a permit and everything's still fine in the neighborhood, we don't need to limit anything, like, we don't need to limit the residential permit. But say, everybody gets a permit and we realize just how congested it is, and a lot of people are getting, as, you know, just an example, five permits for one person because one person has five cars for whatever reason, then the committee could say, listen, we'll let you get one or two permits, but no more than two. Or they'll say you can get three permits, but they're a tiered price or what have you. But the committee could completely say, you're limited to this, or you can get more than this, but we can charge an extra charge, or they could just say you can get as many as you want. But that would be up to the committee to make that decision.
Right, it starts out easy, kinda easy rules, everybody kinda gets a permit, data's collected, oh, there's ten thousand spots for seven thousand, you know, there's seven thousand spots for ten thousand cars. Okay, we're gonna, how can we do this, so we go for the low hanging fruit and just kinda go down from there.
Thank you all very much. One thing to help frame this, there was recently the, the latest census survey, and to help frame this a little bit better, in our particular neighborhood, nineteen percent of residents, nineteen percent of the households do not own a car. And fifty-six percent of the households own one car or less. So just putting that out there so we can better know about how many cars there would be, you sir.
Yeah, I have two questions. One is, is there data that is collected following other programs that have been implemented that kinda show how satisfied businesses and residents have been? That could give people a better idea of success rates?
Wanna speak on how people don't really annex out?
Well, I meant there's, there's surveys, and Zone, Northwest does surveys, and, and they're usually pretty good. The existing ones, people like it because it's getting rid of the commuter parkers. I mean, it's, and each permit pro, you know, it's, it's a hassle, you gotta pay for a permit, you gotta stick it on your window, you gotta not, it falls, you get a ticket. So it's, I mean, they get dissatisfied that way, but otherwise, it's pretty good, no one likes paying for parking in front of their house.
Nobody's canceled the program.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna speak to.
Actually, all the, the, most of the programs, you can cancel it by, you could de-annex or get out of the program by voting the same way you've got voted in. And only one block face has done that otherwise. And the existing, the first program came in nineteen eighty-two in Lair Hill in South Portland, Southwest Portland, and it's still growing today. So, and it's still getting annexed into, and that's what this program would start with, right? It would, it would probably be a smaller area, and it could just annex into, all this has to be contiguous and just get the same voting percentages.
All right, we are getting closer to our time limit. What I wanted to say is that if you can make quick questions, we can probably take two stacks of three. If you can make slow questions, we can only take one stack of three. And then we're going to give them a chance for a final statement, and then we'll talk, have board discussion, and then a vote. So if you can do a quick question, raise your hand, all right, one, two, three, go.
Does the money stay in the neighborhood?
The surcharge money does, for transportation-related options, safety, curb extensions, bus passes for employees.
So the base rate, right now, it's seventy-five dollars. The base rate is just the administration of the program, so that's like administrative fees of all the equipment and all that stuff, plus parking enforcement. If you were to charge a surcharge, everything above that seventy-five or whatever the base rate is goes directly back into the neighborhood, and it would be up to the committee to determine how they wanna use those funds. So in Northwest Portland and Central East Side, they charge a surcharge right now, and they decided to buy transportation wallets. And essentially, it's an annual streetcar pass, annual hop card, or no, a hundred-dollar hop card, and what was the other one? Annual bike town, thank you. And essentially, if you opted out of your permit, you got a free one, or if you're a resident or employee in that area, you can buy one for a hundred dollars. So it's like six-hundred-and-ninety-dollar value for a hundred dollars because they have the surcharge to work with. And in Northwest, they worked with Trimet to, I think it was to add service, right, to the neighborhood, so they added service to the neighborhood, that's how they did it.
So a hundred, if we went with the math that you went with, a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars to manage, to manage this program?
And you're doing that seventy-five times two-thousand-five-hundred?
I'm saying one car per house.
Okay, so that's where, that's where you're getting that number from, confirming, okay.
That's, hire me, I'll do it. You can do it for half.
All right, so the second hand right there.
Enforcement, so we heard earlier this evening, a couple things about enforcement, and being a head leader for a long time, and I've talked to you about it. I think enforcement is the problem, it's not just part of, part of the reason why we're here. How would that affect enforcement going with a program, or can we affect enforcement in being able to not only monitor the, but the illegal parking, which I think is even more a problem than your, your day, your day parking?
The illegal parking, they're, they're gonna routinely go through it, and they'll get all the routine, the crosswalks, that kinda stuff.
At the same time.
At the same time, so they'll be doing that. And if it's a big enough area, they'll be, they're, they promise to do it, how much, four?
Five times.
Five times a week, patrol it?
We talked about last, I mean, here was the fact that we only had parking people at the five o'clock in the evening and no one on the weekend. So if we can't affect within what we do here, the change in that, then to me, it's, it's a very difficult push.
There's a swing shift, and there's four off, four or five officers from.
But currently, there's not, right?
There is a swing shift now.
There is a swing shift now.
Yeah. But there's four or five officers for the whole city. Thank you for that, and maybe they would hire more, then you'd get that certain amount of money. Thank you for the information.
You are the next person on the stack, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I guess I have a brief question and then a longer follow-up, but permits would be available to people who live in the neighborhood, is that true?
And businesses, and.
So I guess, for instance, you know, because I live in the neighborhood now, but for instance, for someone who works at one of the restaurants or account division or so, and has them driving, they likely would not be able to.
We don't know, but you're not guaran, I would not say you're guaranteed for life to defer permit.
My, I guess my bigger question was, you know, I think for all of you, you're really immersed in this conversation, the details and so on, but for those of us trying to figure out, is this good or not, do we want this or not? It might be helpful, kind of as you were asking, just to have more of a basic perspective of what's, what's the goal of this and how is it going to achieve that? Yeah, my understanding is you implementing this hopefully would make street parking easier to access, but would do that, you know, would be somewhat more available, but would do that by discouraging certain kinds of parking, people who are in the neighborhood for hours shopping, or people who work here who might decide to take the bus in instead, or people who have multiple cars but might park some of them on driveways, is that the right idea?
That is the right idea, and it's up to the committee that would pick priority users. Who are the priority users?
I guess, can you, can you just sort of start from that basic perspective of what will this achieve and how will it do that?
Well, the, the ultimate parking heaven is eighty-five percent occupied on a block. So there's always, every block face has a spot, that's the ultimate goal. But hopefully, another goal would be people would use their driveways, people wouldn't own five cars themselves, there's a cost to that. It just makes parking easier.
An example, in Northwest Portland, so in a lot of our zones, we have a hundred percent full-time equivalent employees can get a parking permit. So I have a business, I have ten employees, all ten employees can get a parking permit. In some of our zones, only fifty percent of your full-time equivalent employees can get permits. So I have a business, I have ten employees, only five employees can get a permit. So when we were going through the renewal process in Northwest Portland, I got a phone call from a business owner, and they reduced the full-time equivalent from, I believe it was eighty percent to seventy percent in Northwest Portland. And she calls and she goes, hey, last year I got six permits, what gives, I want six because I have six employees. And I said, sorry, these are the new rules, everybody in the area is now subject to that seventy percent FTE cap. And she goes, okay, so then those two employees will just have to carpool, and that was that. And it's a very small thing, but that is one car off the street. And then when they introduced the surcharge, we got a call from New Seasons, and New Seasons, I don't know if they bought their employees' permits or if they charged their employees for the permits, but I think they got fifty for the year before, and when the price increased, they went down to thirty because it was just too expensive, so they had to find other ways to get there. So that's kind of the beauty of the program, is depending on what the committee determines to be a priority for the neighborhood, they could look at stuff like.
Yeah, it's like the nuances of the program can change.
And those are business.
Employees are the low hanging fruit.
So the upshot would be people who have that opportunity, who basically transition away from parking in the neighborhood all day, might do so, and thus there would be more room for people who really, really need those spaces perhaps.
And that's where the committee comes in, where they do figure out the priority users, like Jay was saying. And so that would be up to the committee to say, this is who we determine to be the priority user, and how do we kind of work the program around it? Because this is such a popular area, and there is so much growth in this area, we don't know the solution, which is the beauty of the pilot program where it's like, now we have these tools available, why don't you try this for a year, and if it doesn't work, take it away, try something else for a year? We don't know the answer, which is the point of the committee.
And I wanna also speak about enforcement. Enforcement there, we're looking at new technology, license plate recognition, and so right now, what they have to do is drive down the street, punch in the person's license plate that doesn't have a permit, and then go, keep doing that. that doesn't have a permit, and then go, keep doing that for a couple hours, and then you have to come back and then try to catch them. So it's not easy to get an area parking permit ticket, really. So this will be, it'll be a vehicle with cameras, they have like eight different cameras on it, scanning for license plates, and they'll just be driving down the street. And the license plates that are permitted will be in the computer system. So they'll just go get, scanning down the street, get vehicles that don't have permits, and then come back in two hours, and they'll just be able to scan it again, and they'll get a ping, give this person a ticket. So hopefully, the technology will help.
So, um, at this point in time, based of our, off of our agenda, we have reached the end of the time. If you still had a question and wanted to do it, raise your hand. I imagine there's more than one person, so, I mean, all right, so, all right, there's only more than one. Two people, so, all right, so I'm gonna go for Ryan, since you haven't asked anything yet, and then, go ahead.
I'm Brian, I'm on the board. We, we talked a little bit about how the SAC would be formed, or at least the criteria for it. But who makes the decision, and how open is that? Do we know who's applied, do we know who's chosen?
So this meeting is to, for the Richmond Neighborhood Association, to say yes.
When that process happens.
And then we will go back and think, we'll go back and create, um, the criteria for the SAC, then we will do an outreach to say, uh, for the out large.
Okay, well, my question is, if we're voting on creating the SAC, but we don't know what the criteria for the SAC is, it's a little odd.
The criteria for the SAC?
Well, you just said you're gonna go back and figure out the criteria.
Right, if like a hundred people apply.
For the out large community. So two, two representatives from the Richmond Neighborhood Association, two from the business, and five of the larger, um, out large community. For that out large community, we have to do a call to apply, right?
Okay, sure.
So we have to, we have to do that. And we will do that with our Equity and Inclusion Manager and the Office of Community and Civic Life, to, to put that announcement out.
We'll probably send a postcard to the whole neighborhood, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it'll be, on the website, we will use all the means we can.
And then it'll determine what number that would be.
Yeah, it'll probably be two, two and five is what we're thinking, given that parameter. It'd be two from the neighborhood association, two from the business, and five from the large, out large community. And then we would, if you decide to go forward, it's like, do you guys want to come with us on this journey to develop this pilot project, and to create this through the SAC? Then we'll go back to our offices and start working on that part.
Thank you.
All right. So that concludes the amount of time for the public outreach and commentary. I know we all have a lot more questions. Thank you all for your patience. It's really, I, I really appreciate all the years engaged there. At this point in time, it's going to be open for board discussions. In board discussion, in the past, we've done a single round through the board, try to make a statement or comment, and then I want to make sure every board member has an opportunity to speak at the end of a round of board discussion. We will do thumbs up if we wish to continue talking, even if you're kind of on the fence, or down, if you don't want to talk anymore at the end of discussion. So once the majority has done even or down, then we will call it to a vote, whether or not to form Stakeholder Advisory Committee. And at that, at this point in time, I guess I'll just kind of start with the board. Any particular board member have a point or thought, or want to kick us off? So, all right, I'll go, you had your hand first, so go for it.
Well, I'll just share that I think at this point, like, we could form a committee, committee could say, "This is a bad idea, well, we don't think we can actually do this." And then after that, the neighborhood could vote it down. Exit ramps from here on out. So for me, this feels like a really low-risk vote to proceed.
I would second that. It's information only. Having information is a good thing, and it can only help us understand whether we do exit or stay on. To get more information is healthy. I love information, I'd love to hear what people have to say. I think the committee will gather more information, and we'll all make more informed decisions. Once again, yay or nay? Being informed is a beautiful thing. I think it's a good idea.
Somebody from this half?
I'm Eric Matthews. You're welcome.
All right. Board member on this half of the room? Anybody? So Alan, you got his hand first, sorry.
Well, two points, um, I think Antonina, or I got an email saying there were gonna be thirteen on the SAC, but now it's gonna be nine?
Yeah, so originally, and you're welcome to try me if you like. Originally, we discussed it after you brought to light that question, you're like, so how many members would we be looking at? And so originally, we were kind of trying to figure out what we normally do, and the closest thing we could come up with, because of the commercial quarter and residential area, was Northwest Portland, so we came up with thirteen. But then, it occurred to us, Northwest Portland is almost the entire district, not quite yet, but almost the entire district. The permit boundary, even the original one that we proposed, which isn't the one that you guys have to stay with, even the original one, is probably less than twenty percent of the entire size of Northwest Portland. So we sat down again, and we tried to figure out what would be equal representation between the Business Association, the Neighborhood Association, and members at large. And now, we're more comfortable with nine maximum.
How long would this last? Again, we're talking about a year process. Then it sounds like, once the program, if it's voted in, SAC continues. So is this like a five-year commitment?
It would be a different SAC. This is a development of the program SAC.
So there'll be a different SAC later?
And then there'll be another committee that will be formed that will, um, evaluate and continuously, you know, review and give recommendations.
Thank you. All right, any board members on this side? Brian?
Oh, I'd just like to say that I value a lot of information, too, but I value the information from the oral testimony of the people in the room. I think that's valuable as well.
All right. Board member on this side? All right, Crystal?
Sure. Um, so, um, I have a question about, I know that in the flyering that we did to get participation tonight, we were able to take the, um, take the letter to an apartment building and rely on the manager to, to outreach within the building, for example. How do you go about getting ballots to each address? Is it more fine-tuned than that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it would be per door?
Per, per address.
Per address, in the building, okay. And with a potential of twenty-five hundred people, so we, um, now I'm on the side of, um, weighing, or gathering more information, and information from oral testimony tonight, adding to that, the larger weigh-in, um, hundreds more in the affected areas is what I consider our constituents on the, uh, Neighborhood Association Board. I'm interested in carrying more weight in from the community.
All right. Anybody from this side? I think there's only two of you left, so. Nope, you don't get to do that. You gotta, I want to make sure, so we've had it, sometimes folks stay a little bit quiet. I want to make sure we have an equitable hearing of what, questions, or statements, or concerns, thoughts, anything along those lines. I can come back to y'all, too, but I will. So, all right. Susan?
I live just outside the affected area, so I'd really like to defer to those who are on these blocks where just probably would be in phase two, I'm guessing, because if you've noticed, the development is, uh, not slowing down much, so it does feel like this may become, affect more and more of us as it ripples. And I've started on two advisory committees. One was with Multnomah County, uh, writing rules for BPA ban as an environmental issue, and the other was for the proposed diverters on Clinton Street, pretty recently. And I have to say, the difference in the two is pretty striking. And one thing that has been hard for me as a resident is like, for example, this information is from a Thursday between five and eight, which actually isn't that inaccurate for this neighborhood. But what I would love to see, and what PIBOT based their information on previously with the diverter era, was a Tuesday during the day, like a commuter lens. And I'm hurtin' that we're looking at division differently, and that it's become more nuanced, because what we see, and I'm not speaking for everyone here, I know everyone's blocks are different, and these are pretty striking heat map numbers, but we're really seeing this kind of affluent restaurant tourism, where people just really, they don't care about driveways, they don't know anything about Portland, they're visiting, or they're late for their reservation at, you know, an expensive place, they're texting while they're driving. I live by a stop sign, and I mean, people are just flying through it during the summer and on weekends. And so what I'd really like to see is, despite, you know, the uncertainties, if this program could be shaped by the stakeholders closest to it, the residents on these blocks, the commercial business owners who really truly know the rhythm and care this much, and that there could be some assets like enforcement, which we have never seen, and some actual, like, crosswalk improvements, the kinds of things that really would help division. I don't know if you've tried to cross-division lately, but it's really hard. And so I'm hoping that we might be able to shape this with the kind of, the kind of growth that works, rather than just sort of this onslaught of continuing to build apartment buildings and continuing to advocate for this kind of tourist approach. It would mean a lot to me to see some of your faces on the advisory committee and, and shaping it further.
Thanks, Susan. All right, I'm gonna come back over here, y'all, is one of y'all ready?
Well, I'm a renter, I have a car and I'm a transplant, so I'm not the best person to stop, but...
You actually are. About fifty percent of the neighborhood is transplants.
I, I understand it's difficult for a lot of people, but I understand, I do live in a city. The city is rapidly changing, and I think we have to take some proactive steps to see what we can do to, to stop it from getting worse, or maybe make it get better, but it's worth the shot.
Cool, all right. Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna transition here, but, oh wait, I'm also a board member, so, uh, the... Parking has been a continuous complaint that I've heard a lot about. One of the big things that we hear is that the apartment complexes, building all these apartments with no parking, honestly, it kind of annoys me, too. And I think it's one of the best ways to really stick it to them, would be to, um, charge a nice fat surcharge for each additional spot. And then the nice thing is if folks aren't using their cars and aren't adding to that burden, then that's, then they, then what it would do is it would lower the rents in these places, because people would have to look at the cost of rent plus the cost of a permit, and that would lower some of those rents. So I think that that is one area that makes a lot of us kind of upset, and it's one possible tool.
It just, it makes no sense.
Okay.
Do you have a clarifying question?
So, um, in my, I guess, in my opinion, uh, what you've seen before, people look at the total cost of homeownership. So for example, when I buy a home, I look at the mortgage, plus the taxes, plus the insurance. When you rent a home, you look at things like the rent, plus utilities, and in this case here, plus parking. Right now, parking's free, so that's not part of the equation. All right. Anybody else on this side, I think? Sharon?
I, I mean, I would just echo a lot of what other people have said, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm very much leaning towards having information, gathering information. As Ben said, there's a lot of more points between here and an actual program being put in place, and having neighborhood input and people's outreach, and I, you know, I think that it's important to recognize that that's the piece we're voting on now, not what that looks like, and that will come later from everybody else.
All right, thanks. Rob?
I, I like what I'm hearing. I like, how do I say? I, I ask myself a rhetorical question, and that is, maybe we should just do nothing, because things will get better. I, and I'm just trying to figure out what happens. If we do nothing, I think it probably is gonna get worse, and I'd like to look into and have some discovery about better solutions.
All right, thank you. So I believe, are there any board members I missed, maybe sitting around? Okay, um, do we want to keep the board discussion going, or are we ready to move on?
I had one other point.
All right, go ahead. So, well, if you have any more points that you would like to make, then go ahead and do a thumbs up. So if you want to keep the discussion going, board members, thumbs up. And if you're meh, or down, if you're not interested. So, let's see here, one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, so, and we have a total of two, four, six, eight, ten. So six of the ten were meh, or less, actually, seven of the ten. So at this point, um, I would need a board member to craft some sort of motion, and then we would need to discuss that opponent, and then vote on it. So are there any board members willing to make motions? Go ahead.
I've never made a motion before, so I don't know what I'm doing, but, um, I guess I'd like to make a motion that, um, the Richmond Neighborhood Association Board, uh, we don't have to sit.
Like, form a, or...
Oh, yeah, engage with PIBOT and a consultant to create a pilot parking program.
All right, that's a mouthful. All right.
Create a SAC.
Hang on, just...
Okay, yeah.
It's on the purple writing, so. Purpleish British. All right. So your motion is that we vote for that?
That we, yeah, that we...
All right. And then, Rob, can you read that back once you have it written down?
Yes. Motion that RNA board engage with PIBOT and a consultant to create a parking pilot program.
To set up an advisory committee? Yeah, so I'm saying that, though, like, maybe modify it, too.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that point of order. And we were trying to clarify between Secretary and Sharon, so Sharon, you are the one that gets to say it.
I'm about to form an, uh, an advisory committee related to the program.
Motion that RNA board engage with PIBOT and form an advisory committee?
Do you need to say specifically?
It does need to say specifically, I've gotten in a lot of trouble with these.
To create a parking pilot program.
You would have to say permit. All right.
Motion that the RNA board engage with PIBOT and form an advisory committee to create a parking permit pilot program.
Is that? All right. And then, second? Which of you wants to claim it?
Brendan.
Okay, all right. So at this point, I will open the floor for board discussion of the motion, or any, I guess, yeah, so, Susan?
Uh, I have a friendly amendment request to add to the motion.
Okay.
To prioritize robust outreach to community throughout the process.
All right. So friendly amendments, I believe, have to go through the person that made the original amendment, so look Sharon in the eyes and ask her.
To prioritize robust neighborhood, uh, and community outreach throughout.
To prioritize robust community outreach.
Throughout.
Community or neighborhood?
Both.
All right. And then Sharon, I think you get full yay or nay on the friendly amendment?
Sure, yay.
Okay. All right. And, all right, any other, uh, board discussion related to the amendment, since the motion is on the table, so we have to address it? Alan?
Well, I just want to say, I mean, I, I've always been a proponent of neighbors voting whether or not they want to do this. I personally don't see need on my street, but I live three blocks away, so I think it's good for neighbors to vote it, and you have a chance to vote it down. But as far as your point on robust engagement, that's PIBOT. They're running SAC in the process, so they will do their normal, robust engagement.
All right. Anybody from this side of the board have any commentary related to the motion itself? All right. Any additional?
Well, I actually just, I would like, our, you know, having been in an affected area of a previous neighborhood change, I would like to see an improvement in the typical robust, which is why I added the amendment. And, um, you know, I was really thankful for the chance. Sharon, who made this motion, made six hundred copies of the flyer. She and Debbie, who are leading land use, have done a wonderful job distributing. I walked about seven or eight blocks distributing them myself. Like, it means a lot to me to be part of a neighborhood. I don't want to just have it be lip service about robust engagement, and I would like to help with that. And so I think our role could be, through, we have an amazing website, we have a listserv, we can keep people informed. There's no reason why it has to be business as usual. This neighborhood isn't the same as any other that has like retail or commuter. So I would like to be a part of that, and that's why I made the friendly amendment, and thank you for accepting it.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Any other comments related to the motion before we vote on the motion? All right. At this point in time, Rob, can you please read the full thing and get all your Ps right?
Yes, uh, motion from Sharon Hatch. Motion that the RNA board engage with PIBOT and form an advisory committee to create a parking permit pilot program, seconded by Brendan. Susan with the friendly amendment to... Seconded in by Brendan, Susan with the friendly amendment to prioritize robust neighborhood community outreach.
All right, so all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand? All right, so we've got, all those opposed? All right, all those abstaining? All right, it looks like the motion passes, and thank you all for your time. Thank you all for your commentary. This will not be the last, either.
I have one question.
Yes.
Do any of the people here get some votes? I know the board...
Every, everybody that is in the area. Yes, yes, every resident. Thank you all. We're gonna take a five-minute break and come back with the Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting about two development projects. There's two different...
In the neighborhoods, and we'd love to have anyone who's interested in land use and transportation in our neighborhoods stay and join us. We're new to this, we're just starting, so be kind. Is there not one in the house that would be great?
We have, yeah, we have an extra series.
Sorry.
Oh, here's one, Brian.
Shall we use this? Only one of those teacher ones?
Okay, we're gonna get started. Thank you all for staying for the Land Use and Transportation section. I'm Sharon Hatch, and along with Debbie, I'm co-chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
This is our first meeting of the year. We've never done this before. Thank you. My name is Debbie Hope Holter, and I'm co-chairing with Sharon Hatch.
So right now, we're running a little bit behind schedule, but we're gonna turn it over now to Adam Jones, who's gonna present on two projects, two proposed projects. The addresses are on the agenda. I'll let him talk about them at 2515 Southeast 41st Avenue, is that Division, and a vacant lot used to be 4864 Southeast Carruthers.
Hi, I'm Adam Jones, and I'm a real estate developer. I've been doing urban infill development for about 25 years now. Started my career in Atlanta. I'm from the Northwest. Got an opportunity to get back to the Northwest several years ago. It's great hearing this initial discussion on the parking and all that's going on in the city and the different opinions and thoughts, and people's different passions. One person's passionate about one thing, another person's, you know, positively passionate about one thing, where another person is negatively passionate about the very same thing. So I know there's a lot of people who like things differently than I do, and I've got some pretty strong passions for cities and urban development. I usually, when I go to a city, my favorite neighborhoods are usually the most dense parts of the neighborhood. That's what I seek out. That's where I live typically. That's where I work typically, and that's what I love. I also have a passion for working to figure out quality housing, and I like housing more than commercial. I've done both. I tend to lean towards housing. I like to work to figure out ways I can get affordable housing. It's very difficult in Portland right now. These two projects I'm presenting tonight are gonna be, you know, in the beginning in the three and into the $400,000 price range. I had a project that I was working on, on the lot on 41st, and by the time we got it priced out, it was four units originally, three-bedroom, two-bath, and the price was, I was gonna have to sell these things for the high $600,000 range to make it pencil. So we went back to the drawing board, came back with something we can sell, starting in the threes and going into the fours on that project. We've got the other property on Carruthers, and it's gonna be in the fours, most likely, that project. So, you know, my, like I said, I'm someone who, you know, I ride my bike. When I lived in Goose Hollow, I parked on the street when I had a car. You know, I got rid of my car. I got married. My wife has a car. I do drive it now and then. If I wasn't married, I probably wouldn't have a car still today. I'd probably use a Zipcar or something. It's the type of lifestyle I like, you know. I know a lot of people, you know, don't. But since I'm a developer and I get to go into cities and neighborhoods that I love and work in them, and try to take my passions and pursue my passions, and hopefully make a better place, then, you know, that's kind of where I come from. So I've got, I made just a few copies, because the last time I came to one of these meetings, I made a bunch of copies, and I just had a bunch of paper left over. And so I made a few copies. I didn't know there was gonna be a screen I could use here, or otherwise I could have done it digitally, but I can send digital copies of this to the board or whoever, so they can distribute.
And we can put them on the site, too, along with the questions that you answered, which I appreciate.
Yeah, so this is 41st Avenue, 2515 Southeast 41st Avenue. I was gonna do six townhomes on the lot. They were gonna be one-bedroom, one-bath townhomes, because I didn't, hadn't figured out how to do anything more than one-ones at the time. Since then, part of the design guidelines for this lot changed. When the zoning changed, design guidelines for this lot used to say that anything that had frontage on Division Street was required a commercial space. Now it says anything within 100 feet of Division Street requires a commercial storefront. So it now has a commercial storefront as part of the project, a flat above the commercial storefront, and four townhomes. Yes?
Yeah, I've been following land use and for here for 30 years. I was not aware of any requirements that there be commercial. There may be ground floor window requirements, but...
Yeah, I wasn't either, when I went in for my earlier assistance meeting. Yeah. I'd missed it.
The center of centers thing, what is it called?
Centers and corridors.
Well, no, but there's a, there is a shorter area that does require storefront. I forgot about that. Yeah, that's, you're right, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how does that...
But that includes, doesn't that only those that front on Division?
No, not anymore. It used to be only those at front. Now it's within 100 feet of Division.
Oh, right, well, you lot, right.
Yeah, and this is probably one of the only, if not the only lots, that doesn't front Division in that area that is within 100 feet.
It's not all of Division. It's just the center of Division.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what, from what street to what street, but Melissa?
I just am surprised by that.
Yeah, I was too.
We just found out a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And I know we talked at previous meetings, so I won't labor it here, but we talked a bit about it in a parking, too. This, the extra challenges that then come with the commercial space and the residential just living right next door to that.
Yeah. It's, you know, one of the things within this environment that we all live and work in is, is however the codes and the decisions you get made for all that, then we're all, we all have to play within that sandbox. And so, you know, Peter was there in the meeting when I found out that I couldn't do all townhomes on this property, and I was shocked. And then I just, you know, I thought, well, I look at it like I try to look, like I look at everything. What's the positive? How can I turn this into something great and do something cool with it? I think we found something. Melissa lives right next door. She's the greatest impacted by this. The space we've designed, we feel like, is best used probably for a small office space. I think that type of space would probably have the least impact, but that being said, we can't dictate what it is.
But what is, what is the commercial space, like, dimensions and all that?
It's a pretty small commercial space. It had to be 25% of the ground floor.
Can you pass a couple of those?
Yeah, you can pass. This is the 41st, and that's Carruthers.
And this is your second time here. You've been here before. I would really appreciate it.
Right, you were here with your other draw, with your other design.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I was.
You know, knowing, being involved, now that I bring back to me the comp plan process and involvement, that regulation was really intended to keep storefronts along Division. This is an anomaly. I bet you could get an adjustment.
I could probably get an adjustment, but it costs money and a fair amount of time. And so I have to make a decision on that.
I understand that.
And that's what I told them in the meeting. I said, you know, I say, the city wants affordable housing, okay? And then puts a lot of roadblocks in front of getting to it. You know, I can't, like, I can't make, you know, $1 of mine worth two so that I can decrease the cost of things. So it's a, it's like a Rubik's Cube developing in the city, and that's what I love. I mean, that's, you know, my, my joy in real estate development, besides hopefully creating something that people love and people use, and it makes the neighborhood better. I live in neighborhoods I develop in. And so, you know, I love problem solving. I love creativity. I love figuring this out. It's getting more and more complex, I'll tell you that. Like, you know, the code books are now this thick, and that's just one of them. Then you go to building code, then you've got zoning code, then you've got this code, then that code, then that code, and it's like, you know, you think you got it, you do, you keep on doing it, but, you know, but it's, you know, what I know, and it's what I love, and I'm gonna do my darn best at whatever I do. And hopefully I provide things that, you know, I want to stay working in this neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood, you know. I'll see you around the neighborhood. You'll recognize me now. You'll see me. My orange bicycle helmet's pretty obvious to spot, so...
I see that too, and we know each other.
Yeah, yeah, I know, John.
I gotta tell you, to be honest, I see your workers parking our, at one time, space that I moved from. I've never seen, maybe you're in your right there, but I see you driving the spot. I mean, this is just, this is a more car, potentially, they're just gonna consume this area just so I can give it vision. But I understand, like, the board chair brought up the economic impact of parking and how it can be absorbed in a good way, but the same impact that, like, there's an economic impact that people that develop were forced to consume parking in their developments. That would be absorbed, too. It just is part of the process. And there's another building going up next to you that's already in the pre-planning process. You haven't mentioned that yet, but this is like a two-step theory or process what's gonna happen. Do you have any diagrams of what that building's gonna look like, or are we gonna agree with each other?
I'm not, no.
Because that's 32 units.
Is that where the saw shop is?
No.
Right on the corner?
I think he's talking about the one down the street.
No, I'm talking saw shop.
Right next door?
There was originally a proposal...
Yeah, I don't think he's...
Sorry. There was originally a proposal. A permit was put in, and they started talking, and then the saw shop people were like, nah, we're staying here. So that's what I heard.
And I just spoke to him this week, too, and he concurred. He said, yeah, I'm not selling.
I hate to be the bump in the road here, but this is just, every building's just another process, and every nod saying, yeah, this is great. See, you're developing, we ride our bikes. But this is literally, also, I do have an economic theory background. That's why I look at this. All these issues we talk about, like, you know, rental prices and occupancy and, you know, the price of things, those are short-term economic issues. We've all been through a number of changes in our life, where we've been through recessions, the high price, the low prices. When you go and start building buildings that have no parking, that's a long-term impact. That's gonna change this neighborhood forever. So we need to be careful when we get dissuaded about like, okay, Portland needs low-income housing. I mean, if the traffic scenario continues in the city the way it's going, and there's no plan to make any change, we could have a ton of vacancies here in the future. This is gonna affect everything. And so I hate to be, you know, the naysayer, but this is, this is already affecting businesses and real estate values. I mean, if things aren't gonna, I mean, I think I've made my point here today.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your perspective.
This is 80, the next one's 32, and the next one's 150.
He's talking about his developments, though, which are not 32, so we can be grateful for that, and we can let him continue his presentation.
I've, you know, I mean, my, you know, experience from living in inner-city and dense neighborhoods is that businesses do get people, the greater density around them can also help pick some businesses up. I don't know if it does yours, John, you probably know, but if there's all of a sudden, you know, 100 people per acre versus 50 people per acre, then it can affect businesses positively. It could probably affect some negatively. I don't know. But that's something I've observed. I've never owned one, a business that way. I know that neighborhoods I go back to that I developed in years ago in Atlanta are thriving. Businesses and people living there. But anyway, does anyone have any other questions? Yes?
I'm curious about your, I have several questions, but one is the timing of your permits?
Mm-hmm.
When you're planning to...
We anticipate summer.
That you're planning to go in for a land use application?
No, we aren't doing, we don't need a land use application for these projects. Yeah, building permit, we're going in within the next month.
Next month, okay. And then, again, I really appreciate you coming here on the early side. That's exactly what our adopted development and community engagement policy is, so I super appreciate you being there. I also appreciate that you had an existing house, and you put it out there to see if we might be able to move it. I went to the city with a friend to try to see if that was even possible, so that's why I met Peter. And I appreciate what you're trying to do. And the one thing that I would just ask about is, in terms of the other things that are on our What to Bring to a Meeting, one of the things is a privacy and view impact analysis. I emailed you guys about this today, just to ask if you could bring that. I don't know if you got it. But what I see is a decent-looking building, but I'm concerned that there's a bank of windows that look right into the neighbor's house, and having gone to someone's house that was right behind 32nd and Division, and this is a woman on a very tiny lot that has two daughters, and their daughters, they keep all of their blinds and window coverings closed all the time, because they can look into all of the apartments, and all of the people in the apartments can look into their daughter's bedrooms and into their other rooms. And their daughters don't go out into the, to play in the yard, because there's a bank of windows of people staring at them. And so it really impacts their quality of life. So I just, I would just encourage you to maybe see if you could do some kind of a view impact study. Doesn't have to be complicated, but just to see if you might be able to maybe shift some windows, have a few less on that side, maybe some additional landscaping, to try to minimize that kind of livability impact.
Yeah, that's, that's a nice...
A real...
That's, that's good.
Quality of life factor for everyone, really, for the people in those, you know, those apartments on either side.
Yeah. And on this project, the front of the building there, the first approximately 40 feet, there's very limited windows I put there. um, there's very limited windows. I put there, um, intentionally, um, when we designed that. Um, the, when, everything that is put on you as far as a regulation that rate, that, that narrows your scope of what you can do, causes you to, it takes away one solution, so it causes you something else. So, you know, the landscape buffer's a great thing. On a forty-foot wide lot, it leaves you thirty feet. If you have to enter on one side of the building, you're down, you know, it keeps cutting you down. Whereas if you have the full width, um, then you could put units facing forward and facing back. But when you keep getting narrowed, narrowed, narrowed by being regulated, 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 then you're forced to either have twelve-foot wide units, which probably aren't gonna do very well in the marketplace, which is what I have to look at, or you turn the building.
Was the city open to any kind of consideration of a waiver for not having a commercial space on the first floor, given that that's?
The city is, yeah, and the city's opened all that stuff for money and time. And money and time after a while gets stretched out, stretched out, stretched out, stretched out. And, you know, before you know it, I'm, that's just gonna be a vacant piece of land sitting there abandoned. So, you know, I, every time I have to have something reviewed by the city attorney, it's, it takes me four to six weeks often to get one thing back. And then, then they'll say, "We've reviewed it. Now, now sign it. We need a wet signature." You get a wet signature. Now they have to review it again. It's the same document they've already approved. Is there anyone else who can review the document? Do they have a paralegal who can look at it and say, "Is this document the same thing? The only thing difference is the signature?" No, the city attorney has to review it and you have to wait till the city attorney re-reviews it. So it's, there's a lot of bureaucracy. And at some point, you throw your hands in there and you say, "I need to find something that works." And do the best I can to do something that's hopefully good for the neigh, direct neighbors, like Melissa. Good for the neighborhood, good for the overall community within the framework that the city and the neighborhood's giving me to work in.
I just wanna say one last thing is that I, I appreciate your perspective and, and considerations that you have. I know that there are longstanding impacts that come from this beyond the challenges that development has, that will have decades to come impacts. Um, I, one of the other things in our policy, I just wanna also, is the, um, keeping track of what the neighborhood said and then a response to comments in the letter of fact. So I just wanna make sure that there's some capturing of this. So I'm hoping you guys are taking notes, not just in your head.
Susan, you had a question?
Um, well, more of just like a follow-up. Uh, we built an ADU on my property, uh, my garage was closer to the property line that's typically allowed. And we got a variance approved because my property, um, my adjacent property owner was incredibly supportive. And she, my mom lives in the apartment. We don't rent it, you know, to anyone, like, staying short-term. It's a very stable situation, but we worked together on it and it really helped the process because it's the first time I ever did anything like this. And one of the things we did that really kind of, um, split the difference between a visibility issue and, and lack of privacy and then just a, a blank wall or, you know, something that wouldn't really fit into the narrow area between the two property line and the building was, uh, the city asked us to do, um, frosted windows. So there was natural light coming in, but none of the windows were clear glass. And it really solved the problem a lot. Cause I, I hear what you're saying, but I think there's a big difference between vacant lot and, you know, commercial with view and privacy issues. And if you're able to potentially work together with folks on the block and others who are involved, it can really be a more, you know, just real privacy within a dense city.
Yeah.
And safety issues as well.
And there's always planting too.
Yeah.
That would be the obvious things.
Yeah, I think the difficulty is with planting when you're looking at an upper-story bedroom window that's really not very far away from another upper-story large window. It's, I mean, that's your only option and that comes with a lot of other problems. Um, so on my side, I have planted specifically for this reason, but it's nowhere near, it's not gonna give the level of privacy that I think we can reach if we work together.
Okay.
Um, and I think the other issue, and we talked about this before, when, when you guys were considering an exterior stairwell, is just the amount of noise that's directly right there in the, in the window area, so.
Okay.
So you have a second thought?
That, I would just add one more thing is that, um, I think we may not always factor in is the light overspill. I know that, um, at, near Denise, where there's several projects, um, the, the amount of light overspill is really significant on two-story properties at night. And so it's, it's another factor to think about. So, you know, if there's any way to maybe shift some of the windows, so it's not a bank of windows. It might have multiple synergies to the project.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
My name's Peter Champ. I worked with Adam for over a decade. Uh, my office is on Twenty-first and Clinton. Uh, we're Portland Digs. We've been there fourteen years now. Um, Adam and I have been working on these infill projects because we want people to own a house in this neighborhood. Um, I live one block north of Hawthorne on Forty-seventh. So I understand the parking issues. I live in a small two-bedroom with three teenagers and my wife, multiple animals. So I get, and our neighborhood, Portland Impact got torn down, Swickley's torn down. I can't park outside of my house on a weekend. Everyone comes back there. And we had this, originally had the same parking issue. They were gonna put, um, meters on Hawthorne at the top end and they reckon it was gonna push everyone back, so they didn't do it. We've lost multiple parking because of bioswells, all the way through the southeast, bottom of Tabor. So for us, it's, um, if you look, if everyone has a redfin app and they look on there and you try and find a house under four hundred thousand, there isn't one. You know, all of us are lucky enough to live in these good neighborhoods, but no one else can live. It's only us. It's only six, seven hundred thousand, five hundred thousand teardowns. So what Adam's doing is, you know, twelve sets of people can go to good schools. They don't have to be further out. They can walk to everything, same as I do. I don't take my car out at weekends. My wife and I put a backpack on each. We walk down Hawthorne. We get our groceries. We go to the park. We walk everywhere. We ride our bikes and that's the goal Adam's trying to do. Um, it's not easy to do. It's easier for us to build bigger and for people to make more money. It's harder to make small infill at three hundred and eighty thousand that we can all have a chance to live in it. Um, D.O. Horton built on the corner of Forty-first, um, those little micro homes. They sold out immediately. They hardly ever come up for sale. And they're not the prettiest. They're not the best-looking. They're tiny. They're not, but people wanna live there. They got a chance to live in one of the best neighborhoods and that's the goal that we're trying to achieve. That's why builders don't do it. They want seven, eight hundred thousand dollar houses so they can make the money. With the cost of building tariffs, the city charges per house permit. I think if people were to go down themselves and see the logistics, what it takes to build a project like this, they would have a better understanding of what you bring to the neighborhood. So unless we all wanna live around seven hundred thousand dollar homes and it's just us, that's it. Or we can build alternate and build smaller infill. Cause we're trending towards micro homes, ADUs, which we all want in our neighborhoods. And it's just another small house, two of us or four of us living on one. We see in the northeast where you have a house, you have a garage and you condoize. So you can have a second family living in an ADU and it's a cheaper way to do it than splitting the lot. And there's a lot of people experiment with that. People wanna live close in. They don't always wanna drive. Not all of us do, so. That's our goal, is to build affordable housing closer in, if four hundred thousand is affordable.
Yeah.
You know, I paid two hundred thousand for my house in two thousand and one. I'm priced out of my own neighborhood and I sell real estate. I wouldn't buy a house. I'd make a lateral move for a one-bedroom. It's not worth it. So I fixed my house up. That's the goal. And I can live in the best neighborhood. My kids love to walk. They understand, you know, scooters, skateboarding, buses, everything. They can go downtown. They don't need a car. We share cars. And that's the way I like to live. So does Adam. So that's our goal, so.
It's that when you're in these, you know, a lot of these lots are the lots that are a transition. It's either, either it's a full lot, a lot of times, where it's a massive building. You know, we can go up to fifty-five feet now in this zoning that I'm on. My building's gonna be under thirty feet. So it's either a massive building. You talk about windows and light and so forth on the residential behind, you know? Look at the buildings along Division, the, the large ones. And, you know, that's, I feel like, I know it's, it's, it's difficult and it's not excellent to be right next to something with windows pointing at you. Like I say, the zoning really puts, puts us, puts us in a box. Um, a lot of the zoning things that are well-intentioned and probably save some other bad things, you know, unideal things from happening, I'll say. Um, when we live in these neighborhoods, it's, you know, you are, it isn't like you're living on a, you know, in a suburban area where there's, there's no one seeing you, you know? Peter can probably pretty much high-five the person outside his bathroom window, his next-door neighbor.
I have like a seventy-foot setback from the other side.
And he, he lives, you know, so, um, you know, and then when you bud up to commercial, I'm, a lot of my properties are budding up to residential from commercial. And it's, it's a challenge and I spend a lot of time thinking about the neighbors. I spend a lot of time thinking about how these buildings lay out. I spend a lot of time looking at the economics to try to make it affordable for the people moving in. Make it make sense for them. Make it to where my family can, you know, make a living. Um, be able to satisfy, uh, my investors. You know, so one, the main thing I can say is, is, you know, there's gonna be a lot of people who disagree with what I do, probably don't like what I do, think totally different than me. But the one thing no one will ever question who gets to know me is, I'm thinking of the people around me, whether I'm doing what they want to or not. I'm concerned about people. I love people. That's why I live in neighborhoods. I don't live secluded. I love community and I'm gonna do my best, um, to live by those values within myself. Whether that meets, you know, whether, whether you agree with me or not. I think you, if you get to know me, you'll have a hard time questioning that. And so, you know, that's what we do. I've been doing it for a long time. I've had, you know, you know, I'm sure a lot of people who don't like me, but I know I've had a lot of people who thought they didn't like me and then decided they did after they got to know me and see some of my projects, so. So anyway, um, any other questions before I finish? I know your time's valuable.
I wanna talk just much about this, the second project.
Uh-huh, yeah, the Carruthers. That one is wrapped by the biggest, most overwhelming building, I think, on Division Street. They're at Fiftieth and Division.
It's debatable.
So it's a large building. And, um, so I'm hoping that I'm making a nice transition from a very, very large building to residential. Yeah.
I own the lot next door to you where our home was built in two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah.
And we paid, I would say, above market for it. Uh, we did buy it before it was actually built.
Uh-huh.
But I was always under the impression, I didn't really speak to anybody regarding this, but the lot that you're about to develop was part of the apartments and would be additional off-street parking. Only to find out later that, and it's also a fifty-by-hundred-foot lot like mine.
Yeah.
And mine affords a very nice, single-family dwelling with a yard.
Yeah.
Kids, a place that I have off-street parking. I own one vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and now I've, I'm faced with the idea of having this big building looking into my yard. And I know I already have the apartment building wrapped around me. But, um, we have trees to help mask part of that. I, yeah, I am really shocked that, uh, the city would approve such a big building and such a modern-shaped building in such an old neighborhood. So, um, I'm, uh, disappointed that it's gonna take up, you, you're putting potentially six more residents on our street with maybe six more cars.
Mm-hmm.
And are these condo or apartment?
These are, these are owner-occupied units.
Owner-occupied, however.
Condominium townhomes.
However, they'll have the option to turn them into apartments if they wish. That is, if I own a condo, unless your bylaws.
We have, we will have bylaws that will limit.
Will any of them be able to become apartment?
I think the bylaws may allow one to be rented. They aren't, the bylaws aren't finalized yet, so I don't know for sure.
I lived for thirteen years on the Pearl in a condo and was a board member for ten of those years. And we had the thirty percent cutoff.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, of, thirty percent of the units could be rented.
Mm-hmm.
And boy, the commitment that threshold was met. We had a big waiting list as well because people wanted to use them as development properties. And, uh, we had Airbnbs pop up all the time. I didn't mind that my neighbor was only six inches away from me because I liked the dense living in the community.
Yeah.
But I did get a little tired of it and that's why we wanted to move to, uh, out of that density and into southeast.
Mm-hmm.
And the attraction to the neighborhood was that a lot of the homes were old and established. Um, our house was actually, the lot was split from a hundred-foot by a hundred-foot lot and the nineteen oh-four home next door to us was rehabbed. And our fifty-by-a-hundred-foot piece was a single flat roof garage that they decided to bulldoze the garage and they planted our house there. So I kinda thought the same thing would happen next to me. And, uh, I mean, I was foolish enough to buy it. And I'm sure this is gonna yield a big bucket of money. But, um, there are people that might be willing to move into the neighborhood and enjoy having a single-family home.
Yeah, the zoning doesn't allow a single-family home on that lot.
Yeah.
There's a minimum.
It just changed since fifteen?
Yeah, it changed.
The city changed it recently. That's why they, recently they were gonna keep it. The city changed the zoning and then the builder decided to sell it because they couldn't do anything with it. They didn't wanna deal with it.
Right.
So.
And they didn't wanna incorporate it into the apartments?
No, they did originally, but it wasn't zoned right.
Wasn't zoned, yeah.
So they still make apartments.
Would have actually built there.
They would have built.
They would have built it, but they didn't wanna deal with it. So once the zoning changed, they just bailed on it.
It probably would've been more impactful if they had.
Yeah.
So it's probably a lesser impact. I, I did wanna clarify, it's not approved yet. You're about to submit in a month? Is that right?
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
Yeah, so it hasn't, it hasn't been submitted yet, so maybe you guys can get together and.
I passed the idea around in the neighborhood about the neighborhood buying it and even put a stacking car stacker in it.
That would be allowed. Wait, do it? No, I don't know.
I think that might be allowed within the zone.
But would it be, would it be, would it be allowed?
Well, we have five minutes left for our meeting. Oh, did you?
I'd like to add something. I'm the neighbor directly across from the lot.
Okay.
Uh, so I own the property right across from the lot. And so I guess I kind of have similar concerns about, mostly about privacy. We have a large porch that we like to hang out on and, like, we already have the, the giant building looking at us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think that, like, as a person who used to live in New York City, like, I, I'm also a person who likes to be in a dense urban area. But I think there's a difference between being in a building like that and being next to a building like that or being the house that's like being towered over by that building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I think, I think mostly my. And so, I think, I think mostly my concerns are like privacy and like timeline of, like, building, like, how long will the construction last? Like, we just, like, went through the construction at fifty-eighth all summer, six AM, god knows what time. So, that's also a big concern, like dust and people leaving their construction garbage in our garbage, which was a big problem that we also had. So, yeah, I mean.
Could you possibly give your contact information to the neighbors that are abutting so that if situations like this arise or you can just call Adam and say, hey, what's going on here?
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would that help mitigate some of this?
I mean, having somebody accountable is definitely a good thing. Yeah, I think my privacy concerns would be, yeah, there's a lot of windows looking at him and the same. I've got two young children who I also have to, like, be there to protect and make sure that they're, you know, that's a lot of, like, new people across the street too. Right now, the apartment building's a little different, I think, because it's a rotating house of people and hopefully if, like, apartments are in there for sale, that it'll be people that last a little bit longer. So, that's a good thing.
That's what kinda surprises me, sorry to add or to tailgate, but surprises me that they would become condominiums because you've kind of stated that who would ever, uh, pay seven-hundred thousand dollars to live in, in that single-family lot? Well, it seems funny that people will pay a little bit less, three hundreds or, I think you said four hundreds in the Carruthers' house, the neighborhood street, that, uh, but yet have, be so confined. I can see it as a rental.
What was the projected, uh, cost for those that you're expecting?
Four hundreds for the Carruthers, the, um, the Forty-first will probably be high threes into the fours.
Because there's basically one condo for sale on the whole of Division Corridor from Belmont to Fiftieth, all the way down to Powell, so we have one unit for sale. And it's that orange building opposite the T-Shop and that's the only one. If you go on Redfin and, like I say, take a look, there's nothing for sale, no one can get into the neighborhood.
It's interesting 'cause the, you know, confined, you know, there's a lot of the single-family homes in the neighborhood that don't have too much of a backyard and so.
The Carruthers though, those are nice old lots.
Yeah. When we're, when we're looking at the market, we're kinda looking at it, an overall in there is, so, you know, and the condos like Peter's talking about, they don't have any outdoor space. These have some outdoor space at least. You know, and, um.
Will the Carruthers' building have outdoor space?
It'll have some outdoor space for the units.
Five main patios that are elevated space?
Oh, um, yeah, it'll have some ground, ground-level outdoor space.
Little concrete paths.
It'll, it's gonna have some pavers and then it's gonna have some landscaped area. Each of them will have their own little backyard area.
Is there like a housing association that does landscape maintenance? Is like the whole property sort of under a plan or are individual owners responsible for kind of taking care of? Properties on an individual basis?
The documents haven't been set up, but typically in a project like this, the, these are a little bit different than a typical con- condominium. In a typical condominium, you own floor to ceiling and wall to wall. These ones, you own all the way to the ground and all the way up, but the common area grounds are gonna be taken care of by, uh, one service. The, their own individual yard space is, um, is really up to the association. I can set the docs the way I see it, they can either keep it that way or they can vote to adjust it.
Do you know if the, um, bylaw plan with the short-term rental permits, would people be able to use those units for that purpose?
For short-term rentals? I, I don't believe they'd be allowed to use them for short-term rentals. As far as whether they rent a room, like someone, like I stayed in someone's room on Airbnb. I don't know about that, but as far as renting the building, short-term, the unit, short-term.
They're not allowed, it's like thirty days plus, you're not allowed to. But people are renting, you know, it's, you're only supposed to rent one or two rooms out in a property that people, you know, it's complaint-driven, Airbnb.
Yeah.
I, we, we really are, we've run out of time, actually. We have two people and I think we're gonna have to wrap up, so. You haven't spoken so.
Yeah, Alan Phil, have we written good neighbor agreements around construction projects? Because that's something you guys that are gonna be living next to it might wanna look into, is a good neighbor agreement surrounding the construction. That's, we've talked about it as a neighborhood, I'm not sure we've actually.
We didn't, but when Safeway was being remodeled, hand entered into one with Safeway, so.
I mean, I can speak to my experience with the deconstruction. Um, I, I work a pretty typical day and I didn't really have any trouble at all. I think you were really respectful about not starting grim secretly early in the morning and the weekends were not busy, so at, at least the deconstruction of the house, I was really confident with the way that you managed all of that. So, I don't know if that offers.
You deconstructed, huh?
We deconstructed. Yeah, well, that's the thing, it's like we wanna keep the impact low on the neighborhood and Adam and I both live so close, I mean, my office is five minutes away. We're hands-on all the time, we're not just gonna say, someone build this, we're around all the time to answer questions. You know, we've been working with the sewer system for Melissa and, um, Mary, who lives across the street, 'cause there was no sewer line, so we're putting a brand-new sewer line in. It was, it was on the city plans for, I think it was two years ago and then we said we was gonna build and they said, all right, you can build it now. So, we gotta put an eighty-thousand-dollar sewer in that's about twenty feet, so.
Eighty-thousand dollars?
Yeah. We've had to have, yeah, it's been a major project sewer line. So, we're upgrading all the utilities in the street, all the water lines.
So, you had to go clear out the Division with it?
No, we're going, we're going to Ivan.
You had to go out, out of the street and clear down to Ivan?
Yeah. So, with that, starting in a couple of weeks, the sewer line.
Susan, did you have a last comment?
Oh, I would just encourage you to, you know, share your privacy concerns about if, if it's at this early stage. We actually, our ADU was a smaller project in scale by far, but it was close to our neighbor's house and we took all the windows off that side because of that concern and really wanting to respect them because it was important to us to be, I mean, you know, my husband and I love where we live, we, you know, are thankful for the support. We had five neighbors write letters of support to the city because we shared our plans throughout. We tried to be as transparent as possible and then the city actually allowed us to add the windows back in, but frosted them, I said this earlier, it makes a huge difference. Our property lines are often so inaccurate from, you know, a century ago. You're really gonna live close to these other folks, it's really worth it to make some concessions that would be privacy and safety-oriented for close neighbors and, you know, it was well worth it to us and very simple. So, it's just if that's something that might improve, you know, the, the visual relationship, I would really encourage you to be, you know, clear on that and meet in the middle.
On, that's, that's all good, um, good comments. On these larger buildings, what I've found is, um, uh, you know, I mean, the design, you can't, when you've only really got one side to put windows on because of fire separation and regulations as far as that, you know, obviously you can't get rid of the windows. You can, but there are things you can do and, you know, um, like I said, I'm, I like problem-solving and being creative and in these buildings, um, what I typically do is that a lot of things, even with, when I'm designing it, I go, okay, well, this looks good, we're gonna walk it at framing when you can get up in the building and understand it, 'cause it's a little bit difficult to understand exactly what it's gonna be like till you can get up in it and then walk through it and understand it. So, that's something we always do with all the buildings, walk through framing, can evaluate it, evaluate things and, and that's a good thing that we can, you know, look at, see, see if there's solutions, see if there's things we can address, see if there's things we can do to, you know, help address those concerns.
I have a question, um, the lots, the neighbors, uh, around, uh, the buildings, the building, are those, are those not, has the zoning changed for immediate neighbors as well? Just thinking into future, um, will those lots potentially change to impact the people who will be living in your buildings?
Yeah, they're both arched and.
Yeah, I mean.
They could be.
It could, yeah. Yeah, it could.
Well, thank you so much, I really appreciate you coming out.
We'll leave calls and if anyone has questions or.
If you wanna leave your.